Welcome, you join me in the pledge please?
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We do have a hearing at seven thirty, so we may have to break for that. Pete, you want to jump in there?
Anytime I can be first.
Okay.
It's a good day as far as I'm concerned. I don't, I don't know how you guys want to proceed, but I know we talked at length. Last time I was out here on limited home rule. So I was kind of charged with kind of getting answers on two questions. And I have an answer on one of them. So if I was in Major League Baseball, I'd be an All-Star. That's five hundred. So the first question, so really two, two drawbacks potentially financially from becoming limited home rule. One is you lose the free services of the prosecutor's office and you're required to appoint a law director. So I reached out to the prosecutor's office, had a couple of conversations and the prosecutor is actually on vacation when I had that conversation and then the assistant prosecutor is on vacation now. But essentially what I was told is they don't see that as an issue that they would love to continue that relationship. At no cost to the township and once everybody's back from vacation, they, they'll, they're going to get something in writing to the board. The second potential financial impact is you're required to have police protection. As we discussed last time, Berlin Township years ago had approached the then county sheriff and said, hey, will you be willing to sign a contract that basically says you're going to provide the same services you provide right now to us as you would any other township, kind of check the statutory box. I've had several, again, several conversations with the prosecutor's office. I don't think legally there's an issue there. It's more of a policy decision by the sheriff to make. They did end of last week, put me in touch with somebody at the sheriff's office to talk to. I have, I have not heard back. I did reach out as of maybe it was Monday? The date is Wednesday, Monday. Left, left another message, you know, describing why I was calling and on behalf of the board and, you know, kind of gave a general description. So I don't have an answer on that issue. I will probably reach back out to the assistant prosecutors and see if I can get maybe some help in arranging a conference call.
I did read in one of the handouts, something about municipal court costs. Is that, did I?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you're going to be responsible for a portion of municipal court costs that would be associated with your, the enforcement that goes on within the township. I, I mean, as far as I understand that that's minimal. But I, I don't know what that, I don't know from a dollar perspective, what that would look like.
Can we talk a little bit more about that scenario, specifically what that means?
Yeah. So basically the statute basically says that you're going to be responsible for a portion of the municipal court costs associated with your enforcement of your, of your Homer resolutions and things like that. So Homer resolutions are enforceable. Well, it depends on what the statute provides, but typically it's a civil fine process. You, one of the, remember it's limited Homer all. So one of the things in limited Homer was you can't create criminal offenses. So all your resolutions that, let's say you decided to do some sort of, I'm trying to think of a recent example. We had a particular township that does not have a single uniform trash hauler. They have multiple trash haulers coming in. They're limited home rule and people were putting trash everywhere. So they basically said, you've got to use, put your trash in a container. When it's too picked up, if you don't do that, that's creating a nuisance. We're going to find you two hundred and fifty dollars. And that's a civil fine. So that civil fine would get enforced through the sheriff's department. And then that civil, that fine then goes through municipal court.
So I think the important part for me there though is it is a cost for an ability that we do not currently have.
Correct.
So should we move forward with limited home rule? Now all of a sudden we have the ability to incur civil penalty, financial penalties, right? If we enacted under limited home rule and then we might incur a cost.
Correct.
But it's not like we just, oh, that's another check we have to write just because we're living at home.
I've never had a township say that they're not going to go home rule because of that issue.
Right.
Yeah.
Because depending on the fine, the court costs could be typically less.
Yeah, well, yeah. And what we've learned to is in a, in a couple of other places where they have, and again, this is, I don't want to scare anybody because living in home role and issuing civil fines is very, it's very limited. We don't, our, our clients aren't running out every week and creating civil fines for the residents. It's, it's particularly to address a very significant problem that they face. That's more of a public health and safety issue. But I've never had anybody say no. And then what we've typically done is work with the municipal court to figure out what all that's going to be. And so prior to adopting that resolution opposing the civil fine, they will build in those costs. So it's really designed to not really, not a revenue generator, but simply to cover the cost of you know, going to court, issuing that civil fine and then getting somebody's attention that, hey, well, you shouldn't be doing what you're doing. So those things are typically built into the
Right.
to the fight.
I assume probably the county engineer would fall in the same thing as the other services. But they would still.
You do not lose, yeah. So we had, I had that conversation years ago, for example, with the Franklin County engineer at the time, who basically thought that he was alleviated to his responsibility to represent the township and that's not the case. And the prosecutor issued opinion to such. So your relationship with the county prosecutor or the county engineer would not change. What it does give you is the ability to hire your own engineer to help to help expedite something, if you will, through the, through the county engineer, but you, you don't, you won't lose Chris services or anything like that. He's still there. He still does, performs all his statutory duties. You just have the ability to hire your own engineer, which may not even be related to road, right? It may be related to something else. But yeah.
Pete, can you talk a little bit about, and I'm sure based just on your opinion, but a township undergoing this type of change in direction or I guess, you know, initiative and the differences in being reactive and proactive with that decision?
Yeah. So, I mean, look, from from my perspective, I, I always encourage my clients to think two steps ahead. And because a lot of times, I think I said this last time, my experience is townships are reactionary. And by that time, that there's nothing you can do about that particular issue when you're presented with it. And I've had multiple conversations and I, I think it's really with other townships in this area, and I, I think it's just really a lack of knowledge from my perspective. Because at the end of the day, why? If I can check the boxes for the cost, why wouldn't I have a tool in my tool belt that I don't have to use at all? It just sits there. It's no cost to the residents. It's, you know, no cost to the township or anybody else. But if I need it, it's there. And so, look, this is all I do. So I'm certainly going to try to make my job as easy as I can to, to, to help when a township calls me and says, we need help. We need to do something about this. And not just me, but you know, the law director, the prosecutor's office, whoever the case may be. So I think we can all recognize the fact that you know, development is coming. I mean, we probably don't know what all that's going to look like yet, but we pretty sure that it's at least coming to the township. And so I think from my perspective, if you can check the financial boxes, it's really more of a timing issue that you know, the board probably needs to figure out, do we go ahead and pull that trigger now? And because I do think at some point in time, man, it's going to be a very valuable tool to the township. It's just a matter of when. And from my perspective, I don't know why you'd wait, but that's just my own opinion.
Fair.
I also brought a couple of samples. So this is just kind of like a this was put on or put out by the general assembly. It's a lit, it's, it was put out in twenty twenty-one. So it's a little bit old, but for the most part, ninety-nine point nine percent of it's still accurate. But it generally describes, and it was put out by the Legislative Service Commission, which they're the people that actually write all the laws or bills that are proposed and everything like that. So it's just kind of a little bit of a summary and talks about everything. So I thought it would be good to you know, if, is really layman's terms, if residents have questions, really want to know what it is and things like that. The other thing that I did was put, just print off a packet of everything that you're required to do to put it on the ballot. So I didn't change the names or anything like that. I just wanted to give you a sample and all these are public records from this particular township, but you know, it's the resolution and a couple of resolutions and other related documents that you would need. You know, ultimately, if you were to decide to put it on, the, the board would need to to pass, but that may also procedurally tell you what you're, what you're looking at. So you're more in luck. I'm just going to leave these here.
Great. Thank you.
Public have any questions? What would be the pitfalls if we proceed with this? We, we could be getting into, there would be a con.
Well, so, yeah, I'm assuming we can check the financial issues off, right? Obviously, if the sheriff were to say, I'm not doing that, you need to enter into a contract and have dedicated cars here. That's not cheap and that's significant, right? And you may not be ready for that. So that, yeah, that would be a potential con. But outside of that, I think it's really no different than anything else that you do as a township in terms of educating and communicating with your residents, which I think you guys, particularly recently have done a tremendous job of doing, continuing to educate. That's really the con is that I see and more often than not, where it's not been successful or passed on the ballot is just a, a lack of understanding what it is and a lack of education coming from the township to the residents. But I, again, I, I don't know if there, I really don't know if there's a con because it's not changing the way that you operate really at all, unless you decide to use it. I mean, it's like, it's like insurance, really. That's how I describe it. It's there if you need it.
Now, chief, is it an upside in regard to the FAR code? Does that help you any?
I don't think so.
No, because we can already, we already have the ability to do citations and stuff.
Yeah, I don't think there's any benefit. I agree with chief on that.
Zoning, maybe it'll help Mike a little bit.
From a zoning perspective, it, it really doesn't, it, it won't change how you operate from a zoning perspective. There's an attorney general opinion that says if you've adopted zoning under your statutory authority under five nineteen, you're stuck with it.
Can't change, can't change the zoning under limited corner rule, but we can use it as an enforcement.
Yeah, right.
Locally of
Of other
of zoning or anything.
I mean, yeah, you really look at like some of the other things that there, and again, I'm not saying you're going to do this, but you know, a noise issue, trash, pub, you know, public nuisance issues, those type of things, public health and safety issues really that you could use to enforce where sometimes you're going to be hard pressed to to find authority to address it, if you're just, if you just remain a statutory township.
Question to him?
I mean, I, I think I'm pretty good at this point. Yes, sir.
Got two quick questions. The answer can be, I think the answer to that is, there's nothing to, to stand in the way of putting this on the ballot and have the voters decide. But I think the answer to can be is yes. Second question is can we afford to? And I'm not convinced that it's simply an issue of the sheriff and the, and the law directly, those are in statute. I think the township needs an administrator. We don't have one because we can't afford it. Township needs a planner, but we don't have one because we have, the township needs an economic development director, same answer. So I think the finances are more than just what we would be forced to do, but what we really need to do at this point in the township's history with all of the changes coming our way, that we need to look at getting in the curve and I don't see us doing that right now. So my, my question is really, if you can't afford to do it as a statutory township, how are we going to do it as a whole?
Do you want me to respond to that?
Please.
Yeah. So I'm not sure it makes a difference whether you're home rule or your statutory. I've got plenty of clients that have that same issue. And that they have decided or they have no, they're in particular situations where economically they can't afford a sheriff's contract. They would love to go home rule, but the only reason they're not is because they don't have the funds to afford the sheriff's contract, but they still have the same needs now. I mean, they're, they're a growing township. They need, they, they need, they need, probably need a full-time administrator. They probably need an economic development director. They're getting threats from everywhere, from municipalities, annexing and development and I, I, I appreciate the comment. I, I understand that and that's the struggle, right? It's, it's kind of that timing issue that I mentioned earlier. But those things are going to remain whether or not you do home rule or not. And not to go home rule because those things are present. I, I don't, I mean, it's a, it's really a policy decision, but from my perspective, again, it goes back to being, are you going to be forward thinking or are you just going to be reactionary? But I, I don't disagree that those things are a need. I understand that.
But we don't have any reason to think that there's some sort of hidden underlying costs that we haven't talked about or tried to identify during the diligence in the last three months.
If we take Homer off the table, those costs still exist, right? Or those needs still exist, right? And I agree a hundred percent. I, I just don't know what going home rule, how that really impacts that need.
Do you want to proceed? Do you want to?
Well, I mean, I think it's probably important to point out, I mean, when, when we first started talking about home rule, the cost was the first concern that came up. I mean, when I reached out to you, that was the number one thing we wanted to understand is financially, what are the impacts or implications on township if we choose to pursue this path? And I think we also need to understand, like, you know, a lot of good points were made. There, there are positions that the township could benefit from right now, an administrator probably being one of the more prevalent economic development, in-house planner. I mean, we're luckily, we're lucky to have some great partners and crossroads from the planning perspective and legal advice from Pete, so on and so forth. So we've done okay, but some of the reasons that we need a lot of these positions is because of the anticipated growth and development that Harlem is going to see. A lot of that being commercial industrial business. You know, Harlem right now is essentially founded on, you know, was founded on agriculture. And then other than that, it's a transient community where people live. The township doesn't make any money on houses. You know, we get a chunk of the property tax that comes through and that's what we, you know, do the budget on, right? Lisa, I mean, that's pretty much the layman version of it, right? That's why we're having these conversations about joint economic development districts and things like that, where we can have some sort of financial revenue vehicles for the township to be able to, in the future, provide for positions like Tom points out. And so just right now, that is a little bit of a sticking point. They're difficult things for us to be able to achieve. But once these, this development starts to happen in the certain little pockets of the township, there will be more resources and there will be more ability to do that. And so, you know, along the lines of talking about TIPS, talking about JETS, talking about CEDAs and everything else that we've been identifying, that will be tools in the future to help us control our own destiny is my opinion that home rule falls into that bucket. So I think, you know, with, with, no, I'm not being here. I mean, for us to be able to put it on the ballot, it would require a believing unanimous. Is it unanimous at our population level or is it two thirds votes?
It's a, it's a majority vote. And, and here's what I would say too. I would, so I agree with everything you said, but I still think you need to get the answer from the sheriff's department before you put it on the ballot.
Agreed.
Yeah.
That's the three big things, the sheriff's department, the prosecutor and the county engineer need to have that agreement in hand for know they're willing to draft it.
I don't think we need anything from the engineer because there's nothing in statute that says that the engineer can't work, do the work.
I'd feel better at least having a letter.
Sure, we can, you know, again, prosecutor's office represents all the countywide offices. So we'll, we'll have that conversation. I'm just letting you know.
And I agree with that. So I think, I think for now, we, we give it some more time to see if we can get the sheriff's response in a timely manner and then either put it on the next agenda or.
Yeah, if you get a response from him, we could have a special meeting in first part of July when John's back and
Further talk about it. Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't know what, what, I really don't know what the response. Just like a levy, a levy would be. So it's usually the first week in August, ninety days before the general election. Yeah. So you, you have time and like I said, you're not, you're, the good news is you're not reinventing the wheel. So you're basically going to switch out names from that resolution.
Mm-hmm.
So if we ever get to that point, I'm more than happy to provide a word document to whoever so they can edit it.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thanks, Peter.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Chelsea?
Good evening, everyone. I'm usually the one in the back, you know, in the back, but Holly had a prior engagement for another client, so I could just step in. So it's nice to, I hope everybody's having a good week. I'm just here to provide a quick update over the last month. Holly did meet with regional planning and their consultant to kind of see where we stand on their study. And it does appear as though everything is on track. The consultant has been engaging landowners as we speak. So everything's been going really well with that. The, as you know, the current two oh eight plan and the agreement with Columbus follows the Duncan Run watershed. The one request that was made during this meeting was that Harlem kind of evaluate and give, identify a ten-year development horizon, basically drawing a line to help understand kind of the scope of development that you plan to see in the next, in the next ten years, just so they can make any necessary revisions to the current plan that they have. So we're looking to hopefully get that done in the next couple of months. But really outside of that, we have a partnership meeting, we have a meeting with Galena here this week to discuss some potential partnerships. And then really in other news, we have our steering committee meeting where, as you know, our steering committee meeting, our steering committee members have been tackling their fun field trips where they're going all over central Ohio and even to other regions to take notes about other communities and what they like, what they like and what they don't like, and then report back. So we'll be excited to capture those inputs. And then just in terms of the strategic plan, we have a pretty solid first draft. Of course, we'll get more insights from our steering committee members tomorrow, but we have a pretty solid draft as of now and we're doing some internal revisions. Holly is on vacation next week, but we should have a solid first draft for your review by the first week of July. Very good.
Questions? Thank you.
All right. Made it easy on me. All right. Thank you very much.
Physical officer, one of them.
Bank, or May bank reconciled, setting up our signature appropriation ledger and status and cash summary reports been emailed and posted on the website. Approved the amounts to pay said bills in the payment listing report up there, starting with warrant number one, three, nine, six, nine through warrant number one, three, nine, eight, nine. Voucher number one, four, four, dash, two thousand twenty-five through voucher four, nine, two thousand twenty-five total amount, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety-five cents.
I'll second it. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Approved the Harlem Township purchasing policy requisition form for the elected officials and department heads. This policy is intended to confirm with the state of Ohio laws and best practices for government. After approval, I will email the approved policy in the form out to the department heads to review with all the employees and add the new policy in form to the employee handbook, handbook, if that could be made.
Discussion? Resolution for purchasing policy and
Emailed it to you guys.
Right.
Now, you can go with that order of events, approval now, distribute later.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm moved to approve.
I'll second it. Roll call vote, please.
Oliver.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution passed.
I bet.
Okay. Yeah, we got a few minutes here. Approval to submit the REA for Green Cook Road Improvement. This will be in two, for the Delaware County engineer to prepare a new OPWC funding application that would go into the system this fall. Decision would be probably next March, I think, is when they award those. This is the same road that we applied for last season and was turned down. So I would make a motion to submit the REA for Green Cook Road Improvement OPWC Funding to Delaware County Engineer's Office designating Dave Jackson to signer.
Second.
Oh, roll call, please.
Jackson.
Aye.
Oliver.
Aye.
And to submit an REA form for Green Cook Speed Study. This is a section of Green Cook. I, we, I received an email. I don't know if you did, Adam, but it's from Fancher down to Franklin County, which are, that part of Green Cook is a little bit narrower. A lot of people walk on that road and bike and so forth. So the procedures, we have to submit an REA request for engineering and they'll do it, conduct the speed study on that portion and recommend if the speed limit could be lowered or not. So I would make resolution twenty-five, zero, six, eighteen, T, zero, zero, five, to submit that. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in his favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Uh, one more here. I can do these. Resolution twenty-five, six, eighteen, zero, zero, six is to approve the signing of cyber deception supplement application. Move to approve signing a contract for cyber supplement application to Hiscock Insurance Company for cyber. Uh, move to approve signing a contract for cyber supplement application to Hiscock Insurance Company for cybersecurity. It's cost of twenty-three hundred and eighteen dollars plus two hundred dollar agency fee for a total of twenty-five hundred and eighteen dollars. Designating Dave Jackson as signer, you have a second?
Second.
All, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. The last one in that category is, uh, Resolution twenty-five, six, eighteen, T, zero, zero, seven. Approval to renew our Ohio Plan with Reinhardt, Walter and Danner Insurance Agency. Uh, this is the coverage on our, uh, equipment, buildings and so forth. Uh, so I'm ma- moving that we renew the Ohio Plan with Reinhardt, Walters and Danner Insurance Agency to cost it thirty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars Designating Dave Jackson signer.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. And do our hearing now. This hearing is, um, for the approval of zoning application HTZ C twenty-five dash oh five amendments to Article eight, or excuse me, Article seven, Neighborhood Office District and Article nine, Neighborhood Commercial District. Uh, Regional Planning met on this application the twenty-fourth and gave their recommendation, which they, uh, only commented on changing one item. Additional approval of text amendments to Harlem Township zoning, uh, resolution was, uh, they were saying noise requirement added to C two may also be appropriate for C one. So they, they were advising for both the, um, the zoning commission met May fifth. We received this packet May twenty-first and this hearing was scheduled, excuse me, advertised on our web township website, calendar, Facebook pages, community sign and backdoor for legal time. That was done May twenty-third. The, um, zoning commission had their hearing, like I said, May fifth. Uh, there were some minor changes, uh, one member wanted to change the wording on twelve point oh six B uh, from less evidence can be provided to unless evidence can be provided. Same change was made on fourteen oh six B. And, uh, there was similar comments on, uh, twelve oh six B and fourteen oh six B again. Other than that, there was no objection, no discussion. The zoning commission recommended approval to trustees. Is there any questions or comments? Adam?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion, we approve Resolution twenty-five, six, eighteen, T, double oh one, to approve the zoning application for, um, the Article seven, Neighborhood Office District and Article nine, Neighborhood Commercial District. Have a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Jackson.
Aye.
All of it.
Aye.
Okay, motion approved, uh, this is subject to a thirty day referendum period before it become effective. Uh, administrative office.
Approval of trustee minutes for May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, regular trustee needing minutes. And May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, special trustee needing that.
So move.
Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I forgot to put it on here, but I do have an update on our phone system. Finally, um, it is going in next week. I am waiting on the payout information, Lisa, um, since obviously it's gonna be very different because we've been paying on the old, um, system. So I am waiting for the exact payout, um, for the old system. I will send that to you as soon as I get it. Um, so you guys know it's been since March, since we've been working on the phone system. It's just been a lot of back and forth. Um, once it went from our sales, um, guy Jim, he came out, looked, said everything looks great. We can switch over the phones, we went through and counted, figured out what we needed, what we wanted. Um, once it went over to the project manager was when it kind of went a little funky, um. Things just kept getting extended, time kept getting pushed out. I finally said, you know, they're like, well, we're trying to figure out your building, and I said, then send someone out. I said, I want somebody on the ground looking at things. So they finally sent out, they threw, they came in, climbed through the ceilings, looked at everything. They let us know that there's a possibility we would have to rewire a few things. Um, and that would be at a cost. And I said, well, we were not told that, so figure that out. So they said within forty-eight hours, we get, this was about a month and a half ago, within forty-eight hours, we would get information about how much it would be. Never heard anything back. Three weeks later, I called the project manager and say, hey, haven't heard anything from you for three weeks, what's going on? And he said, well, I messaged them, but they never called back. So we're just gonna install. And I said, no, you're not. Said you will not install until I absolutely know you're not gonna charge us more. I don't want anybody here, nothing being sent to the building, nothing. So then we have another two weeks. He called back and we had a very stern conversation. Chief was in the office with me and I pretty much said, you will be installing in June. If you do not install by the end of June, we will be going elsewhere. So our phone systems were delivered within the week and we're getting installed next week. Because this has just been ridiculous. It has taken way too long for as big of a company as they are. It was a lot of ball dropping on their end, so I had enough and conversation turned into, we have phones.
Good work.
So we will have phones next week.
Sounds good. Have you and Lindsay ever had an opportunity to talk to the, our website person?
Yes, so we actually met with the website last week. Um, we did about an hour with them figuring out what we're wanting, what the residents are wanting from what Lindsay has been getting. And he said ninety-five percent of the issues that you're having right now can be solved with training. You know, I came in after the website had already been set up. I didn't get any training on the website, I was kind of thrown in, here's password figured out. Um, I learned how to do a few things on there, but not like the detail of moving things around and changing what it looks like and stuff like that. So they are actually providing Lindsay and I free three hour training. So we're doing two and a half hours next Wednesday and then two and a half hours the following week. Um, or sorry, hour and a half, an hour and a half. Um, so we will have three hours of internet training here in the next month. And at that point, we should be able to fully run our website without stripping and starting over. So lots of training coming up. And then we do have a full reconfigure redo on our website in twenty twenty-six. And I said, what if we like our website looks? He said, it will be free and I highly suggest you overhauling your website. Um, so it's a great idea, especially since, you know, a lot of the different boards could change by then, have a lot of different people and things like that. One thing that we talked about is a bigger feature for the fire department. Um, when you click for the fire department, it should almost look like a completely different website and feature them fully. We should have pictures of their staff, you know, their full timers, better pictures of the truck. Uh, something that the chief and I had discussed, and I'm gonna get quotes on it, is having someone come and actually take pictures of our township. The pictures on the website are a lot of pictures, just pull, just pretty much stock photos. Um, I think it would be great to have professional photos come in, maybe a video come in, kind of hovering around our central area of our township. Um, some really cool video stuff that we had discussed for the fire department, you know, drone going through the apartment, over the trucks, things like that, getting some great pictures of those. Um, so I'm gonna send a couple inquiries out to local photographers that I know do video and photo. Cause I think as we're growing as a township, I think that our presence online needs to be a lot more up to date.
True.
So that's something I think as a new website gets, you know, recreated, I think we've been talking about branding and things like that in our special meetings. I think a big part of our branding would be getting images of our actual township, so people know who we are. So yeah, so website's gonna be updated here real soon, so keep up with that. And we will have phones that we can talk to you on, but we won't get them up on.
Good, okay. Thank you. Chief?
Thank you, trustees, um, just a couple of things tonight. Um, we, uh, obviously rely on mutual aid. We have a major incident. We also help our other neighbors with mutual aid. Um, with the coming of Columbus's new fire station at Harlem Central College. Um, we felt it was advantageous to be proactive and reach out, um, with them. Um, Columbus does things a little bit different. They want the mutual aid defined a little bit. And what we've done in this contract, it's the same one I used at Liberty. We will only allow them to take certain things, so the township will never be completely stripped running into Columbus. Um, I don't foresee it happening a lot down there because there's a lot more stuff that's closer, but there is that southwestern corner of the township and that, that part to worry about Columbus, so we could help each other out down there. The goal is obviously to get who we can there quickest and fastest. So, um, with that, um, you've got a copy of it. Um, I would ask that you approve Resolution twenty-five, six, eighteen, oh nine, uh, limited automatic mutual aid. The key is limited there. Um, and if we enter that agreement, allow me to be the signer on the agreement. The agreement will not change from what I've sent you guys to look over. Um, we've got defined areas and we've noticed too, some of the defined areas actually overlap some of the areas that we're actually going into playing township in New Albany now. So it's that core Central College corridor, basically.
I'll make the Resolution twenty-five dash six, eighteen, T, zero, zero, nine, for the approval of the limited automatic mutual aid agreement between City of Columbus, Ohio and Harlem Township, Ohio.
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Jackson.
Aye.
All of it.
Aye.
And then, uh, the next item, uh, twenty-five, six, eighteen, ten, accept the resignation. A part-time firefighter, Brooks Church, uh, Brooks was a full-timer here for a while. He left, he came back, he was a full-timer, then he went to be full-time at Liberty, um, but he stayed here. And, uh, he has got to, um, for lack of a better term, kind of thin some of the things he does, some of his commitments. Um, so he didn't want to leave, but, um, we have our staffing up exponentially than what we used to have. And there's not a lot for some of the part-timers to be able to grab shifts, so he chose to, uh, separate his ways with us.
Motion to accept.
Let's say affect the date.
She's got, she's got, we'll get you coffee, the resignation.
Oh, thank you.
I'll second the motion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Chief, was there no prior mutual aid agreement with Columbus as the first?
It's the first.
First.
First for Harlem Township, yes.
How long has it been since we established a mutual aid relationship with a neighboring municipality?
Um, since before you and I were born.
Didn't that stop?
Now, it's been, it's been, it's been what, fifteen years, sixteen years? Uh, the, the Delaware County has some fire associations, so they have mutual aid within the county.
Yeah.
Just like Licking does. Um, one of the things that has happened in the last couple of years here is our mutual aid partners have actually been reaching out to us to have them help, uh, of them. And so we've got, you know, county line with Monroe, got that piece over there with B S T N G in Genoa, little piece of Westerville. And then we've got the southern piece with New Albany, but with Columbus putting out a new station and we thought it only made sense to try to get protection, uh, help us with protection on there as well.
That's great. Good work.
Okay, maintenance station.
Good evening. Uh, quick updates on some things. The large culvert project out there at thirty-six seventy-three Green Cook Road was completed by Delaware County a couple of weeks ago. They had installed the two eighteen inch, forty foot culverts. Got actually knocked down in about three, three and a half days, so I was pretty impressed. Looks good, residents are happy, I spoke with a couple of people out there. Um, we did a first road, road, first round of roadside mowing, um. He's got it knocked down off the road, it's not all complete, but we got one pass across, done some burmiding on the new paved roads where the shoulders have been soft and failing. And then, uh, nothing real major, three large tree branches have come down on gorse that's over there by Ivory Ridge, just some during storms. One was a nice sunny day with nothing happening, the tree just fell over. Don't know why, but we had a resident call in and we got taken out. Cemetery's had three barrels since last meeting, two foals, one urn. We've actually got all the old barrels topped off, topsoil, grass seed and just mowing, 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 cause for some reason that hill just grows like the best thing in the whole township. So that's been busy, the park has been, uh, we've mown almost twice a week, keep it knocked down. Update on the restrooms, they have been painted and the ceilings walls are completed, new LED lights installed, floor coating is actually going in tomorrow. I will be here to meet the contractor to get them scheduled and the plumbing fixtures are gonna be installed Monday, the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. And I just got confirmed today on the twenty-fifth, the partitions, scrap bars, mirrors will be installed, so hopefully by July fourth, we're open, is my goal, is the plan. I've got all the materials to toilet paper, paper towels, soap dispensers and all that on stock to put in. And was brought to attention in the last park meeting that the Harlem Road Church is having a volunteer day on Sunday, June twenty-ninth. So I reached out to, uh, David there who advised that they're having about, we're close to probably fifty volunteers, weather depending, that wanna come to the township and do per se maintenance needs, as we agreed upon, spreading mulch around all the trees at the park, which accompanies ninety-seven trees, believe it or not. And then spread mulch here at the firehouse, and then we're looking into possibly prepping and staining the picnic shelter and concession stands. So I've been working with that group and the park committee to get that coordinated. And to let you know, I did purchase mulch through First Impressions out of Chris Brothers. Um, commercial rate to have four hundred bags of mulch delivered to the park and a hundred to the firehouse, to have the volunteers spread it. And I feel that's the best way to do it, that way they're not having to lug it with wheelbarrows. And it's just, I'll place the pallets around the track, so it's easy to grab and hopefully we can get it all knocked out and be a good day. The Grange Hall's still there, nothing much happening there but rentals. But I do have some, uh, resolutions on here about the salt barn, which I know I've been in contact with Dave quite a bit, that the roof has been leaking and but looking into quotes, so I'm asking Resolution twenty-five oh six, one, eight, T, oh, eleven, to approve for the salt barn roof to be replaced, as well as all the fascia around the outside with a contractor of Abria Property Homes. On not to exceed eight thousand dollars, which is quote is actually at fifty-eight hundred and some, but I'm not sure if we'll have some more decking material once we get the other roof off. So I'm kinda giving me an extra, extra leeway in case you find other problems, so I would like for that to be approved.
Uh, they're doing just like for like on the replacement?
Pardon?
They're doing like for like on the replacement as far as the materials you.
Yeah, well, instead of doing a shingle roof, we're actually going with it's a waterproof ice membrane. And then we're doing the rubber, it's an asphalt, asphalt rubber roll, because the slope's only a two, uh, two to twelve. So due to the very low slope, if we do a shingle, we could get some weeping back in, so we're gonna do an overlap a- asphalt roll, which is actually cheaper than the shingles. So it's getting this quote. He's about where just a shingle were for us and this guy's doing all the fascia as well. And this guy was actually turned on to me by Dustin, who he uses all quite often, so I think he's a pretty reputable guy.
I'm moved to approve.
Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carried.
The only other one is the Resolution twenty-five oh six, one, eight, T, oh, twelve, to allow Lisa to open a PO for those salt barn repairs.
So move.
Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carried.
That's all we got.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. I'm just gonna do, do this update a little bit differently, just in the spirit of reducing redundancy. It's gonna hit on the updates of things that have changed on a lot of these issues. Right now, we're staying at thirty-six, uh, permits, it's, uh, compared to twenty-three last year. Uh, we still are working the ten code and violations. Uh, we have four, the violations are of course still the businesses operating residential area. Only thing that's changed is that NEF has changed, and he's at the BZA and they had a meeting Monday that they continued due to the fact that they need some, um, public records requests from us, which I called today and talked with Place and the attorney for them. And, uh, after talking with the attorney that's, that's covering Corigo for us, uh, he advised me that, uh, he thought that the public records request, number one, wasn't put in properly, but number two, was not clear enough. So talk to Place, he's gonna give me some clarification on exactly what he wants. And I called the attorney and told him that, you know, we're not trying to. And I called the attorney and told him that, you know, we're not trying to pull anything on him. He understood. He said, it's not an issue. He just wanted to make sure that that everybody knew they still wanted the public correction request. So I got that settled for him. Um, as far as any other updates, the Hatch Road property that was sent a letter from the health department last, I think it was about two months ago. And then they had another month and they had to get back with them. That is come up with nothing. Nothing has changed. So they've reissued a letter. They sent it on, 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 uh, six eleven. And they've got till six twenty seven actually to do something with it. And, uh, or they'll escalate it to Corey for him to take legal action, which will probably just come back to us to do some action, which we talked about already last month. That we are gonna do something, uh, if that does happen. Uh, the business line I talked about last month that was up and it was a violation and a guy was gonna come in and try to get a permit for it, has done nothing. So I just contacted and told him we need to take it down, the sign's down. Uh, the last thing that I want to talk about is really, I know I talked with you guys last month about was either last month or the month before both, about the iWork. Um, the software for, for the zoning. Hannah, I was getting close on that. And then Ashley told me that while I was gone, somebody contacted her that was doing the same thing. And it sounded pretty good. So I looked into this stuff, the information he sent her and did a quick compare and contrast on it. And, uh, it's actually a better system than what iWorks is. It offers more and better functionality. Um, and I, I think, did we put these in the package, the stuff that I? Okay, so you guys have had it. You can look over it. But some of the important things I thought was a big difference was, um, one of the things they do is the G I S and mapping integration. They automatically get with Delaware County and update every quarter. Period. Whereas iWork would do it if they were notified that they had a, an update or that we needed an update because our system wasn't working as well. So they automatically do that. Um, other than that, they've got a lot of the same functionalities that iWork had. Got Chiefs gonna talk to somebody, uh, he's, he's, he's gonna try to call him. You're gonna try to call him? And talk and see if he's got some functionalities that he can use. He didn't have anything he could use on iWork, but in talking with the guy at the cloud, he seemed to think that they had stuff that Chief would be able to use. So I want Chief to check that out. And the biggest thing is the cost savings, whereas, um, iWork wanted six thousand a year. This place only wants thirty seven hundred a year. And, um, they, they won't update and increase their cost on us, just like iWork said they wouldn't do. And then so it'd be like thirty five hundred dollars for the first year, plus they only won a thousand dollars for an implementation. Whereas initially, iWork wanted four thousand, then they dropped it down to two thousand. Well, these guys only want a thousand right out of the get go for the implementation. So um.
So it's a thousand dollars to get you up and running thirty seven hundred, continue.
Yeah, thirty seven hundred a year, like three hundred bucks a month. As opposed to six hundred, which is what we've been for the other one. Um, I just put it in real quick. I'll just read in, in conclusion, the, the cloud permit offers Harlem Township a, a modern, efficient and transparent way to manage planning, zoning and development. Its adoption will not only improve your internal process, but also enhance service delivery to our citizens and stakeholders. It does have some and you'll read in there when you read this, it does have some integration where the public can get in and see things and, and, um, so it's a lot different than what iWork was. And it's a lot more user friendly. So if you guys can look over that, we can talk about this next month, but I wanted to bring it up and just do it real quick. Talk.
Chief, you're gonna check into it with somebody? Did they happen to give you any kind of references?
He's sending that, he's emailing me that today. They've got a lot of townships up in North Ohio. Astoria was one of them I can remember.
Okay.
Um, North Royalton, but he's gonna send me those references. I'm gonna talk to them.
Alright, sounds good.
Presentation is really good. Um, it was about an hour presentation. I did send it to Mike. I sent it to you guys, people like see it. Uh, and it shows you how to run the system and it's, it pretty may, pretty much makes applications coming to Mike done. Like they cannot pass go or collect two hundred dollars until they do the entire thing. There are checkboxes that won't let them go forward unless they have everything that we're asking.
Yeah, and that's one of, it's one of the things that is in my recommendation, bullet points, but she's right. Whereas now, I do a lot of times, I have to chase down our residents two to three times because, you, you know, we've written it down on the sheet that what they need to turn in, but it's usually not turned in. So I have to chase them down. It's three or four days before, you know, they can get back with me and give me everything they want. Whereas this thing will probably I assume they'll, I'll be able to put some examples out there and they'll know exactly what they need to. And they won't be able to submit it until they've got everything in there. So should be a quicker turnaround for, a lot better information for us.
Sounds good. So better, it does more and it's cheaper. What's the downside?
I know.
I know. And it just happened that they had called me and said something while he was gone. And I was like, hey, I think this might be what you are already looking at, it's just different company. And I was like, I wish I would have known what it was before the presentation, cause I would have had incident on it. I just knew it was some kind of software that they kept calling and bugging me about. It looks like it's gonna work as well.
Uh, cloud permit, uh, the new ones. Permit.
And it looks really, really user friendly. Uh, something else that I don't know if you saw it on there. Um, residents can actually go on and see where permits are in the process. So say they wanna know if the barn next door got a permit.
Okay.
They can go on and see that, yes, the barn next door did get a permit, but it's in review. It hasn't been approved or it has been approved. Who they're not gonna call in and say, hey, did that person across the street have a permit for this big old barn that they?
You get a lot of those.
We get those a lot. So they can go online and actually see, yes, they do have a permit, you know.
Well, your neighbor now has permit.
Yep.
Does he really?
Yeah.
Cool. Anyway, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Uh, do we have anything communications tonight?
Um, no, I emailed her, but I don't know if she can do it.
Good, fine. Dave, you're up.
Good evening. Thank you. I just have a three things to, to bring up. I'm wearing three different hats here, so we'll move right along. So Harlem Township hosts its first of many Merka two fifty Ohio Harlem territory. Uh, events on Saturday. It's going to be an open house at Fancher Cemetery. Uh, we are at the point of, of ready to set it up and, and go with that. So, uh, it's just getting the ball ru- rolling. We're gonna have lots of opportunities for en- engaging with community and getting people to come out and connect with their history, uh, witness the, the graves where Revolutionary War veterans are buried here in Harlem Township. Uh, second, um, we have Duncan Run Bicycle Rides going to pedal out of here on the morning of July twelfth. And, um, we are going to be, um, I think, uh, seeing about the same kind of crowd and, and all that we had the last couple of years, uh, so what early expectations are. So I, I'm expecting a, 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 a good, uh, event for us on that. And for some reason I forgot the third thing, so I'm gonna cut it off here. Yes, there we go. As part of the planning process that we're implementing for the northwest quadrant of the park. Um, we're going to have a lot of different projects come through that. The idea of the planning process is for us to put pieces together, not to hold off until, you know, we've completed everything and then start building. And so this is one good example for that. It's a little library. Uh, it, it, it's in poor condition and we have people that want to rebuild it. And we are looking at places where we're going to put it in the park. Uh, right now, the people that we've talked to have said, no, don't put it back on, kneel out. And we're, we're good with that, but we want to also hear from other people. We haven't made a final decision at this point. But we are gonna have a new little library. It's gonna be there, uh, for people to continue to enjoy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Public comments? Tony?
Um, from H T H, Dave mentioned the bike ride on the twelfth. Be careful on the roads. Uh, the second thing is Smokey Bones, time to donate. We're partnering with Smokey Bones tomorrow between five and nine. You do need a copy of the paper flyer or have it on your phone, um, or to be credited to us. Um, we're hoping to get a good turnout so that we can get some decent donations in. Um, they're gonna be giving us twenty percent of these, uh, meals that are bought. Um, third thing is, uh, Lisa, did Karen talk yet about Harlem Township Day? Uh, in August about, um, getting a dumpster. Now, Porta John is something she is going to be talking to. We would like to have a, a dumpster again in the park. Um, we do the cleanup, but it's nice to have someplace to put the bags.
I think I was involved with it somewhat, but yeah.
Okay. Do you wanna hand it over since you probably?
We could work it out as a team.
We can team up, buddy.
We can do it. I'll, I'll pick the spot. Make it happen.
Last couple of times she just wanted it to be done through you guys rather.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, we'll do it.
Yeah.
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 Uh, and the same thing with the Porta Johns.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We can do all that. Just let us know what you want.
Yep, okay. Now, Lisa, uh, Karen will be talking to you guys. The third thing is, uh, an issue we had with our food trucks. Um, we would like a copy of the report from last week that you made on the food truck that caused it to leave.
Let me correct you. They were told they could stay. If they came back, they had to make the corrections.
Okay, well, that, that particular company also has two other food trucks that were scheduled to also be here. Um, they've decided not to, to come at all. So they canceled all five appearances here. Which caused us some confusion and, and consternation to try to fill in those spots. And you notice we did not have a food truck at the farmer's market today. Um, we have managed to scrounge up some food trucks to come in for the other days that they canceled though. But if we're going to be a destination, uh, place here in Center Village, like some folks are talking about in the picture. We cannot come across as a place that makes it hard to do business here.
What was the issue with the food truck, Chief?
They did not have the proper piping permits. They were going to hot fill a generator, the gasoline can for the generator was inside their cooking area. The extinguisher was unacceptable. Um, there's numerous violations. Chief McKean did the report. I know he told them that they could stay, but if they were gonna come back, they had to get these violations corrected.
So if, if we could have a copy of the checklist that you run, we would give that to the, uh, food trucks ahead of time. You may have less issues with them.
The food trucks should all be inspected ahead of time anyway. What was the thing saying with that? Right, well, that doesn't, that doesn't mean anything to us.
But Delaware County doesn't have a general.
No, they have, there is a, there is, every individual department does it. Okay, if they went.
Really hard for, for food trucks to do business in Delaware County.
I sim, I, I sympathize with you, but my, our top priority is safety. And the, the things, the, the things they were doing were not, were not up to stuff.
Then we, we would request a copy of.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
So we can make sure this never happens again.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Really.
And I did, um, connect McKean, um, Assistant Chief McKean and Karen on email. So they should be communicating. I did talk to them cause she called me. Uh, so they are connected on the email, so we should be getting that to her through email.
We really appreciate having a food truck there. As the farmer's market, it does bring in a lot of people. Um, people just driving home on six oh five, stop in and, and get their dinners. Um, and it is it is a thing people look for now.
Probably don't want their dinners to taste like gasoline now, do they?
That, that ame.
Or blown up.
Yeah.
You've got public.
But a.
I, I personally, that, that just made my heart raise, heart is so, I.
I think you got the solution figured out though, right? Like, let's get the checklist, give it to whatever vendors you want. Say, hey, you know, check the boxes.
Thank you. They almost all have Columbus permits. Um, cause they make a lot more money in Columbus.
Oh, sure. Sounds like we need a food truck festival at the park.
Yeah.
Okay.
All kinds of sites.
Any other public comments? Adam, what you got?
I don't have a thing, sir.
Wow.
Trying to beat this rain.
Yeah. Does that mean there's a motion involved?
Sir, if there's no further business, uh, move, move to adjourn immediately at eight oh five P M.
Uh, well, second Ted, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
We're done.
Thank you.
Eight oh.
We have some homework here to do though.
Hey, I got a question for you.
Yeah.
Does the forum meet anymore?
To.
Okay, I just haven't seen anything. Fucking been a long time.